She's got a good old Canada, isn't she?
Yeah.
A lot of people here.
Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll stand for the singing of "O Canada", and after "O Canada", if we want to remain standing for a moment of remembrance.
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
And we have a record of attendance, Linda?
Okay, good.
So, welcome, everyone. It's a full house. It's a great time for everybody to be here, and I can tell you, on behalf of everyone at this table, we're absolutely thrilled that you could join us. We're excited about this evening. We're excited about the next four years. I would say, get your seat belts and hang on. We're going to get some work done, and we're really thrilled about that. So, we're going to go right into business with the election results report, CAO. And by the way, there's coffee and tea at the back table and water. There's treats. It's not for later, it's for now. So, if anybody wants to partake. Okay? Good to go.
Thank you, worship. So, we had an election on October 15th, and pleased to say, we had 23 citizens put their name forward to, for the offices of mayor and councillor. And tonight, we have six councillors and a mayor to be given, take the oath of office, successful candidates. So, the Returning Officers' Report is attached to the agenda. So, what we're going to do, her honor, Judge Christensen is here to administer the oath of office. We'll start with you, worship. I'll have you go forward. And so, what I'd like you to do is go to the other side of the presenter table, and the oath will be administered. And for anybody in the audience who wishes to take pictures, we're in no hurry tonight, so please step forward and have your pictures. And when you're done, we'll move on to the next councillor.
I'd ask you to place your right hand on the Bible. Pam Mooney, do you swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty the Queen II, to her heirs and successors according to law? Do you swear that you are duly qualified, as required by law, for the office of mayor of the town of Yarmouth? And that you will truly faithfully and impartially execute the duties of the office to which you have been elected, to the best of your knowledge and ability? And that you have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any impartiality or other undue execution of the duties of your office?
I do.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
Yeah!
I'd ask Don Barry to come forward. May I keep with your right hand on the Bible? Don Barry, do you swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors according to law? And that you are duly qualified, as required by law, for the office of councillor of the town of Yarmouth? And that you will truthfully, faithfully, and impartially execute the duties of the office to which you have been elected, to the best of your knowledge and ability? And that you have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any impartiality or other undue execution of the duties of your office?
I will.
May Donny.
Wade Cleveland? I'd ask you to place your right hand on the Bible, please. Wade Cleveland, do you swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors according to law? That you are duly qualified, as required by law, for the office of councillor of the town of Yarmouth? That you will truthfully, faithfully, and impartially execute the duties of the office to which you have been elected, to the best of your knowledge and ability? And that you have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any impartiality or other undue execution of the duties of your office?
I will.
Sandy Davis? I'd ask you to put your right hand on the Bible. Sandy Davis, do you swear that you, Dennis? You swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors according to law? That you are duly qualified, as required by the law, for the office of councillor of the town of Yarmouth? That you will truly faithfully and impartially execute the duties of the office to which you have been elected, to the best of your knowledge and ability? That you have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any impartiality or other undue execution of the duties of your office?
I will.
And may Clifford Hood QC come forward.
Lacey?
I ask you to put your right hand on the Bible. Clifford Hood, do you swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors according to law? That you are duly qualified, as required by law, for the office of councillor of the town of Yarmouth? That you will truthfully, faithfully, and impartially execute the duties of the office to which you have been elected, to the best of your knowledge and ability? And that you have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any impartiality or other undue execution of the duties of your office?
I do, my dear.
May I, Jim MacLeod, come forward, please? I'd ask you to put your right hand on the Bible. Jim MacLeod, do you swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors according to law? That you are duly qualified, as required by law, for the office of councillor of the town of Yarmouth? That you will truly, faithfully, and impartially execute the duties of the office to which you have been elected, to the best of your knowledge and ability? And that you have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any impartiality or other undue execution of the duties of your office? And last but not least, Phil Mooney. I invite you to put your hand on the Bible. Phil Mooney, do you swear that I will be, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors according to law? That you are duly qualified, as required by law, for the office of councillor of the town of Yarmouth? That you will truly, faithfully, and impartially execute the duties of the office to which you have been elected, to the best of your knowledge and ability? And that you have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any impartiality or other undue execution of the duties of your office?
I will.
On behalf of the town, we want to thank you, your honor, for coming in and doing this with us. It's important business. We take it seriously. And we just want to thank you for being a part of this. You are more than welcome to join us. You're also free to... Okay, so, it's official. And I think the first thing we should do is ask if anybody at the table would like to share a few words. Everybody's here. We're live on East Link, and it's a really good night. So, if anybody wants to share any words. And if you don't know how to turn your button on, you've got friends on either side. Councillor MacLeod?
Thank you, your worship. I'm looking forward to, I'm really looking forward to this next four years with our present council, and looking forward to working with our staff as we work hard to keep our town alive and well and looking into the future. I also have fans, I mean, family in the audience. And I'd like to take a moment to recognize one of those people. I want to, and he'll be embarrassed when I mention his name, but I want to introduce Tyler MacLeod. Tyler MacLeod is our grandson. And he is on, he's in grave, he's in... He's a classroom representative for the Student Council of Meadowfield School. And he's active in all areas of life and sport. So, Tyler, thank you very much for coming.
Councillor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I would like to congratulate yourself, Mayor Mooney, and the oldies that got elected, Jim, myself, Sandy, some of the newbies, Wade, Donny, and not so new, but reinvigorated Cliff. I really look forward to working with everybody, especially this new council, over the next four years. I think we have a great team. I think we can collaborate with our municipal partners. It's good to see Richard Donaldson and Leland Anthony here tonight, our fellow counterparts in the county. Not also do we have to work with those units, we have to work with the rest of the municipal units in southwestern Nova Scotia. We have to work with our partners through the provincial government and federal government. We could do great things together, but we shouldn't be working in silos anymore, your worship. But, as you know, in public life, without the love and support of your family, and Jim mentioned it just a minute ago, I would like to thank my brother Fraser. Even though he's not here tonight, he's in Mexico, but... And I thought when I got elected, I was a lucky Mooney, but his guidance and support over the last eight years has been great. To my long-suffering and lovely wife Darlene, I know pub... Give her a clap! She's been great keeping the home fires going while we fulfill our public duties. But, to the residents and the citizens of the town of Yarmouth, thank you for the trust and support that you put in myself. I will not let you down. I think we've got a great team around us. And we're going to hit the road running. We're going to use all the verbiages. We're going to hit the road running. We're going to have the pedal to the metal. We've got them all going. But, thank you, your worship, and thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Councillor Cleveland?
Your worship, I just wanted to say how excited I am to be here. It's a dream that I've always had since I was in high school. And to be honest with you, to continue the analogy, tonight kind of felt like I was getting ready for prom. And it was really exciting. And when I walked in here and I saw the sign, my mind blew ever so slightly. I'd like to congratulate everybody. I'm extremely excited. I think that we have a really great team here that can do a lot of things. A few days after I was elected, in a little notebook that I keep, I made a bucket list of things I want to see done. And I'm never going to tell anybody any of them, but I'm going to work towards that goal of getting those things checked off the bucket list. Maybe it'll take four years, maybe it'll take longer. But, I'm really excited to get going. Thank you.
Councillor Hoyd? Yep, you're good.
So, your worship and fellow councillors, I'm a retread here tonight. But, I'm just so pleased and excited. I literally had a frog in my throat, and I have one now. And I almost had tears when I was sworn in by a former colleague at the Practice of Law, and then later on, a Supreme Court Justice. Tonight, that was quite neat. But, I want to space special tribute to the people that placed their confidence in electing this group here, myself included. But mostly, I want to acknowledge the contributions my wife's made to bring me here after 54 years, and my sister Belle. They're special people, and they've done a lot for me. And you need to know that. Thank you.
Councillor Barry?
I'd like to thank family and friends. I'd like to thank all the people that have trusted me for giving me the opportunity to learn something new at my age in life. I'd like to congratulate all my team members. And the key is that we have to be a team over the next four years. And I'm looking forward to being very productive and learning everything that goes with being a new councillor, since I'm very green, and that hopefully, we'll do business at the town that we're supposed to do. Congratulations to everybody. Thank you.
Councillor Dennis?
As already, I want to congratulate Mayor Mooney and the members re-elected and the new councillors. And I look forward to the next four years working with you as a team on the projects that we have underway and working on developing new projects. I wish to acknowledge the municipal units that are here tonight. And I look forward to our continued work with them and thank them for coming. To the rest of the audience, thank you for coming out to the swearing-in and then our council meeting. And it's much appreciated. Thank you.
I guess that leaves me. And I wanted to say thank you to everybody that put their faith in this team. And Don hit the mark. This is a team. We just got sworn in this evening, but I can tell you, the past month, we have, we've come together and we're so excited about what's ahead. Every single one of us. It's exciting. There's a mixture of, you know, new and experienced. And it doesn't matter. It's just, we need everybody that's at this table. And everybody is going to contribute greatly. I know that. For me, I remember four years ago when councillor Mooney put the chain of office on me. And it was particularly close to my heart because my grandpa Eamonn sat in this seat, and it was 50 years ago. Because I remember saying, "When I'm finished my first term, this chain of office will be 50 years old." And so, he's always right up here on my shoulder. He's engraved right above Bill Mooney. That's where the names are engraved. So, it's really neat to sit here. And it's so good to have my mom and my dad in the audience because they've done this 50 years ago, and now they're repeating it with me. Thank you for being there every step of the way, for your support, for your love. For Cliff, I caught what you had! And it means a lot that you're always there every step of the way. And Julie's here. She's always right there. And Jane's right next to her, my best friend. And they're always there. And another cool thing that I want to share with everybody this evening while I have a second, is, you know, there's somebody in this audience that's a brand-new councillor from the county, from the municipality of Yarmouth. And 50 years ago, when my grandpa was the mayor, Patty Durkey's dad was the deputy mayor to him. And we said some years ago, we would do this together. So, congratulations, Patty. That one vote was worth it, I'll tell you. And you're going to have a great run. I want to thank Warden Anthony and Deputy Warden Cunningham and your councillors that came out this evening. Warden Donaldson from the municipality of Argyle and Deputy Warden Muse. We're just absolutely thrilled. And your councillors have come out tonight. I think everybody knows, you've heard us all say it, we're all about partnerships. There's nothing, and actually, the new councillors went, spent a couple days in Truro this week. And I was really fortunate. The province asked me if I would do some of the training. I don't know, after four years here, they figured I must have something to do that. So, I was really honored. But it was, we talked about partnerships. And we got to share with the rest of the province and the newly-elected officials how great we do it at this end of the province. So, I'm certainly looking forward to working with all of you. We've done great in the last four years, and there's more to come. I will say, everyone already knows this, we have a tremendous relationship with the province. Zach Churchill is second to none. Colin Fraser, the same thing. They've been tremendous supports for us. They go to bat for us every time. And I speak to them daily. So, we've got that connection, and we're off and running. We've come a long way in the last four years, which is all I can speak to. I wasn't here before. We've got a lot more to be done. And we at this table know that we can't do it without your input. So, we do this every month at 7:30. And I promise treats and coffee and tea if all of you want to come back every single month and sit here with Kevin Northup and the Vanguard too, because they're always here. But, we're absolutely thrilled that you came. Everybody at this table has opened doors. Phone us, text us, stop into the office, whatever you need. We want to hear what you want to say. And as councillor Mooney said, we will hit the ground running. So, thanks to every one of you for your support. You did. You did say it. So, the next order of business is the election of the deputy mayor. So, in your packages, you have a request for decision. And it's, what we've done in the past is, I don't believe we've ever had, we've always had the four-year term. When we elect the deputy mayor, the deputy mayor is the deputy for four years. But, we may be changing that this time. So, we have a request for decision in front of everybody. The subject is deputy mayor selection, and the recommendation is that it is recommended, based on prior discussion with the new council, that the selection for deputy mayor be done for two-year terms. Now, I will say this. I believe we just had some discussion before. It doesn't mean that if somebody gets elected that they can't get elected again. But, it's an opportunity for two people during this term to serve as deputy mayor. So, I'm looking for that motion, unless anybody has any questions.
Seconded then.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. So, that means that we will have an election for deputy mayor. We'll do that now. And that whoever is chosen by council will serve for two years, and then we'll have another election in two years. Okay? So, what I'm going to do is call for nominations from the floor. I need a seconder with each nomination. And then I will ask three times if there are any further nominations. Then we'll close nominations and we'll move to the next step. So, I am looking for nominations for deputy mayor.
I nominate Phil Mooney.
Okay, you want to say that again? No, you just go right ahead and off. Okay?
Your worship, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay. Moved by councillor Barry, seconded by councillor Cleveland. Go ahead.
Your worship and fellow councillors, traditionally, it has been the highest vote getter which has served as deputy mayor. I supported the motion, the recent motion that we've just passed. At this point in the evening, I think, knowing where the read is around the table, I would like to move the motion to support councillor Phil Mooney as our deputy mayor for two years.
Okay. So, are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? And last call, any further nominations? Okay, I move that nomination cease. And all those in favor of councillor Mooney as deputy mayor? Say aye. Aye? Okay, you know what? We're going to do that again. All those in favor of councillor Mooney as deputy mayor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Congratulations, deputy. Congratulations, definitely. Now, we're thrilled that you're all here, but I don't want anybody to feel like if you have to leave, that you're interrupting anything. You're certainly not. You just get frisked at the door and have to get through the bars. Okay, so good. Do we have any declarations of conflict of interest? In understanding that conflict of interest, you can say that you have one just before anything comes up. If you don't do it now, and something comes up on the agenda, you can certainly do it then. So we're good, everyone? Okay? And approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Go ahead. Oh.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we're approving the agenda, Counselor Dennis and Counselor McLeod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of amendments, Town Council, October 13th, 2016.
So moved, your worship.
Moved by Counselor, or deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Barry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Now, see, the camera's on me, but in the background, folks are leaving. But many are staying, so that's okay. There's a lot of things people have to get done. Okay, so right down to business. A, Municipal Awareness Week for discussion. So I just asked Linda if she would add this, and I only had her ask it added on Tuesday. Municipal Awareness Week is November 21st to the 25th. We have a lot of options, you know, different things that we can do. UNSM does have, I was thinking of PowerPoint, maybe we could go to the high school, since the principal of the high school is sitting here, you know, we should probably do something for Municipal Awareness Week. I think we all agreed that going forward, we would try to help educate the public on different things. So do you want me to pull something together and let you know? Go ahead, deputy.
I think, your worship, you hit it right on the head, and I think Counselor Barry will be a great asset in getting the Municipal Awareness Week and the awareness of municipal government. I think a great place to start is the high school.
High school, okay.
Right? And I think be between yourself and Counselor Barry. I think that'll be a great start, and I know there's lots of interest in government and the workings, especially after the election a couple of days ago in the states, so I think people want to get involved, and I think what a great opportunity for us to showcase what municipal government is and what it does.
Yep, good. Okay, so Counselor Barry, you're okay, I'll just talk to you after, and we'll plan something, and then I'll just advise council, so anybody that wants to come and share in that, we'll just put something together. Okay? B, letter of congratulations to Bernie Smith, Bernard Smith, deputy.
Thank you, your worship. Make a motion that the Towne Yarmouth send its sincere congratulations to Bernard, Bernie Smith, on it should be not winning but receiving the French Legion of Honor award.
Moved by deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Dennis. Any further discussion?
Question, your worship.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Recommendation from the Dog Park Committee.
Your worship, this is a request from a Citizens Committee that is guiding the Dog Park project. I'd ask you to consider tabling this until we do our council committee appointments, rather than doing this ahead of that process.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Request for decision policy change, committees of council policy. CAO?
So, your worship, we had some discussions among this group prior to getting started tonight, and determined that the meeting time that we had for committee of the whole at 1 o'clock on the fourth Thursday of the month was not going to work for this group. And so, in order to accommodate this council, we've done a request for decision to change that to 3:30 PM on the fourth Thursday of every month. And so, this is a policy change, it was circulated, and so if it's approved tonight, then the policy is approved.
Good. Okay. So the recommendation is that council amend the committee of the whole policy to change the meeting time to 3:30 PM on the fourth Thursday of every month. Go ahead, Counselor McLeod.
I was going to make that a motion, your worship.
Okay, good.
I'll second the motion, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hood, seconded that. Any further discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision council meetings bylaw amendment, first reading. Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, again, this is, comes out of a discussion among the group here as we were getting organized. We talked about some of the traditions of council that are not necessarily policy or bylaw. One of those traditions is that council does not make decisions on the same night that we hear a presentation. And so, it was requested by the group that we prepare a bylaw amendment that would make that part of our council meetings bylaw. So tonight, that is the amendment that is before you, and so a motion would be appropriate to accept first reading, and then at the December council meeting, we would have a public hearing on that matter, and then consider second reading.
Okay. So the recommendation is that council amend the council meetings bylaw to prohibit council from making a decision at the same meeting as they receive a presentation on a matter, and to move this to set first reading. Yes? Okay?
So moved.
Counselor Cleveland.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Barry?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision, Central Business District Improvement Plan bylaw amendments, first reading. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. This is a little bit of a housekeeping item, but I'll talk about it just briefly. This past spring, the legislature provided councils throughout Nova Scotia with a new opportunity to phase in incremental commercial tax assessment in high priority areas. Our council got off the mark first and early in putting together a bylaw to take that authority and put it to work. Unfortunately, one of the requirements in this process is that the bylaw be reviewed by the minister prior to becoming law. The ministers, minister and his staff did review the bylaw, there were a couple of amendments they'd like us to make, they're more or less housekeeping items, but because we are the first to put one of these bylaws forward, they felt that this would become the template that others would follow. And so, they've asked us to make these amendments prior to the minister signing off. So the document is before you tonight for first reading, and just as the previous item would be advertised for a public hearing, and we would consider second reading at the next council meeting.
Has everybody looked at this? Okay.
Yes, yes, indeed. We have looked at it, your worship. I'll make a motion that we follow the CAO's recommendation.
Counselor Hood?
I'll second the motion, your worship, and just comment that in seconding the motion, I was more than pleased when we had a pre-meeting on this issue, and we're informed of the previous council's activities to bring this matter forward. It's an important initiative to enhance the opportunities to provide tax incentives in the downtown core area, and hopefully, it'll bear fruit if we can get through the process and finish it. So I'm very happy to second this motion.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Setting the minimum price for tax sale. Good. CAO?
Your worship, this is somewhat of an unusual matter. We have a tax sale coming up later this month. We do have two properties that are coming back up for tax sale that were, a year ago, up for tax sale. There's a large amount outstanding on both of these properties that we, that in my opinion, we have no possibility of realizing through the tax sale process. So accordingly, I am able to make a recommendation to you to consider accepting a lower minimum bid on these two properties. They're in the request for decision and the amount. So the first one is 55 Highway 304, and the minimum bid that I'm recommending to you is $1,500. And the other property is 351 Main Street, and I'm recommending a minimum bid of $10,000 for that.
Counselor Dennis?
I'll make the motion that the following minimum prices be set for the upcoming tax sale for the two properties.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, and I'll second the motion. And Jeff, the properties will be advertised, locations, and how we usually do the tax sale. Will it be separate, or will it be on the same roster as what we have now?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Your worship, we will, this will appear in the regular ad, but we'll do some additional promotion as well, because our hope would be to attract some interest, obviously, on these properties. So we'll put a little extra effort into making the public aware that there's an opportunity here to consider picking up a property and hopefully developing it.
Yeah, there's a big difference in what sewing and what, yeah. So that's good. Okay. Mover and seconder?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision, security lighting at ferry terminal. CAO?
So, your worship, we have to do some lighting enhancements down at the ferry terminal, and our public works supervisor responsible for that went ahead and sought quotes. He expected the quotes to come within or below $25,000, which is my purchasing limit. Anything above that has to come to council for approval. The low bid did come in at $27,500 plus HST from Corning Electric, and I'd ask you to consider approving that purchase tonight.
Okay.
I make that a motion?
Okay, moved by Counselor Barry.
Second, your worship.
Second by deputy. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Request for decision, appointments to boards and committees. Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, this is simply asking that council consider an earlier meeting than the committee of the whole meeting this month. The reason being is that the election was held on October 15th. The couple of weeks leading up to the election, we didn't have many of our boards or committees meeting, and now we're going to be almost two months between the last time some of our boards and committees met and the next time. So if it's possible to get together some afternoon next week to look after this, that gives some of the boards and committees the ability to get going with their meetings.
Good, let's do that, okay? So the recommendation is that we hold a short special council meeting next week to work through committee and board appointments. Counselor Dennis?
So moved.
Moved?
Seconded. I'll second it. Do we need a seconder for that, or just Linda sent out a notice for the meeting?
We need a seconder, so that's good.
I second.
Yeah. And so, Linda, you'll take care of that, and maybe, I would try for one day, is there any day next week that doesn't work for anybody? We'll find, we'll figure that out.
Two choices.
Yeah.
Give us a first choice.
A Tuesday or a Wednesday?
Sounds good.
Okay, and preferably 3:30.
Question.
Okay. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, reports. I don't think there are any. No reports, no citizen advisory report reports, reports for information, mayor's report, questions for committee chairs. We don't. We don't have any committee chairs. No additions. Approval of invoices.
So moved, your worship.
Boy, what time is it? Did we set another record? Is this the second? Wow. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Date of next meeting is December 8th. And do we have in camera matters?
We have no camera matters.
Okay. So we're finished for the evening. I have to say, good stuff. That was, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Moved? Good. Okay. So again, folks, there's treats back there, coffee, tea, and thank you all for coming. Hope you stay around for